Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community during the past week. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Rogan. Mr. Loscom.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. McGough.
Here. Let the minutes reflect that Mr. Rogan will not be in attendance this evening. His -- he had prior commitments and should be back next week.
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Gahan temporary chair for the Committee on Community Development.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Minutes of the Scranton-Laguana Health and Welfare Authority's Regular Board Meeting, held on May 15, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Tax Assessors Results Report for Hearing Held on June 4, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3C, Tax Assessors Report for Hearings To Be Held on July 9, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D, Agenda For The City Planning Commission Meeting Held on June 25, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3E, Minutes Of The Composite Pension Board Meeting Held on May 28, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3F, Audit Status Report From Robert Rossi and Company Received June 19, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Are there any clerk's notes?
Nothing. Mr. McGough.
Thank you. Any council persons have announcements?
Yes, Mr. McGough, I have one. Besides the fireworks event that's going to take place next Thursday, there also will be a concert and fireworks at Naught Park on Saturday at 7:30 PM. There also will be the Jimmy Stur Orchestra will also be there too, so you can start the Fourth of July celebration a little early this year. Thank you.
Anyone else? A couple of reminders. First of all, next Wednesday, next week, the meeting, council meeting will be held on Wednesday evening. That's July 2. City Hall will be closed on July Friday, July 4. Also, next Wednesday, Mr. Amaroso will be making a presentation to council at 5:00 PM. It will be advertised as a caucus. Mr. Amaroso will be here at 5:00 and then we will have the meeting. Yes, it will be held in council chambers and the meeting will follow. Also, on tonight's agenda, or for tonight's agenda, there are two pieces of legislation that will be taken from the table. They're the -- they were tabled to allow for public, or for comment period as required by HUD. They are the two pieces of legislation from OECD. They will be brought back in Seventh Order, as Seven C and D. And also, since they are not on the agenda and people did not have, did not know that prior, we will allow for additional comment period prior to those being voted upon. And that's all.
Fourth order, Citizens' Participation.
Joan Hodowanitz.
Good evening, Council. Joan Hodowanitz, city resident. With regard to 3F, the audit status report from Robert Rossi dated June 19th, there's progress. Instead of having 26 outstanding items, we're down to 25. Okay? That's progress in one sense, but on the other hand, it doesn't seem likely that that audit is going to be available to the city before November 15th, when they have to present their operating budget for next year to the council. So that, that's an item for concern, especially considering not just the financial situation of the city, but the fact that we seem to have issues, accounting issues. We've already had one that, that came up a few weeks ago, supposedly involving El Boskov. And I was, I came about 15 minutes to 6:00 this afternoon and I was looking at the background papers and there was quite a lengthy composite pension board meeting report that was dated May 28th. That's item 3E. Have any of you had a chance to even glance at that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you read the narrative, Mr. McGough?
I'm sorry?
Did you have a chance to look at the narrative, the first few pages?
I read the, I read the minutes that were given to us.
I started reading it and I got to the second page and a couple of red flags went up. Okay? I asked the city personnel, is Kathy? Okay. I asked Kathy if I could get a copy made. Unfortunately, the copier was down. So I'm going to get a copy made over the course of the next few days and I'll readdress this next week. But the first paragraph on page two was very interesting because there was an issue about where checks were being written. Was it against the general fund, not otherwise specified, or against the city's coffers? And, you know, when you see something like that, you know, that should raise a red flag to whoever is receiving this report. If I were receiving the report, I would go back to that pension board and I would say, "Say what?" You know? I have no idea how much money is involved, what they're talking about. Wasn't a very clearly written paragraph. It's the first paragraph on page two. But there was this issue of, you know, "Oh, are the checks coming out of the pen, the general fund?" They should be written against the city's coffers and it was just kind of never resolved and they moved on to another issue and another speaker. That's why I'm very concerned about this audit report, because the audit's never going to catch up to the accounting, you know, as long as we're playing this catch-up game year after year after year. So I will get a copy of that lengthy report made and I will come back to you next week and I will read you that short paragraph. And maybe if you have a chance to read it over in the interim, you know, we can then get an answer on what are they talking about and is there an issue? Because that could fly under the radar. And I think a lot of our accounting issues are flying under the radar because we have neither the time, you know, to pursue them. Okay? So, you know, that's a little thing buried in a report. That's a very lengthy report. But it raised a red flag with me and I stopped reading at that point in time because I'm going to get that whole report copied and I'm going, I'm going to look at it with a magnifying glass because I think these are the kinds of things you should be doing. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Faye Frannis?
Faye Frannis, Scranton.
Good evening.
Good evening. What I'm saying is just my opinion, but I'm sure many people feel the same way. Tonight, for example, in the caucus, Ron Kolgeski from the county was there. He had so much information to share with the people, I couldn't even begin to remember it all, about demolition and taxes and if you have a house and you want to buy the lot next to you and put it on the tax rolls and keep it, make your house more valuable. Like, I can't even begin to tell you all the important things that he said. But because this council, not Jack, Mr. McGough, Mr. Gahn, Mr. Wexler, I don't know about Pat Rogan, they don't want the people out here to hear what's going on in that caucus room. I saw no reason at all why Mr. Kolgeski could not be out here saying everything he said in there for half an hour, so the people in the city would know what he was talking about. Just hearing council having, just having council here, it means nothing. I thought it was very interesting and I think everybody in the city should have heard him. But they don't have the opportunity because Mr. McGough, Mr. Wexler, Mr. Gahn want to keep it in the back room, so people can't know what's going on. And you can't sit there and say otherwise because I've asked you many times and none of you have spoken up for wanting it out here. You just run along, Mr. McGough, follow the, follow the master. And last week, Mr. Gahn, you mentioned about that parking authority default made the city's credibility bad. Oh, no, it didn't. That was the best thing this council did with Jack Loscom, Janet Evans, and Pat Rogan. Thank you, Mr. Loscom, last week for speaking up the way you did and informing the people what's really going on here and all the hard work you put into that. Could you imagine if that parking authority were allowed to run, as it was with Scopoletti, when they came here with that caucus? And thank God, you know what? That caucus was out here so the people could see it, just like you would want it, Mr. Loscom. And those people saw everything he said. And let me tell you, they didn't have a budget, they had all these figures, but they didn't have any, how they were spending it. They didn't even have a clue. Like, it was so embarrassing. It's right there. If anybody wants to look on the Scranton City Government website, go to city council and look at the minutes of the meetings and go back to when that meeting was. Try to find it and you'll see the minutes from that caucus with Mr. Scopoletti. He got like $80,000 dollars a year and nobody knew why because he wouldn't say how the money was spent. So that was the best thing you did, Jack. And I'm glad you spoke up and I hope you still say something. Now this Pango situation. Come on. They may have it now and they want to renew their contract. I'd like to know, why is it that you want these people? I'm not saying they're not good, but why isn't this going out for a bit? Why?
It was.
Oh, it was? So why is it, why is it, why is it that you want to? Mr. Loscom, how do you feel about this?
I don't know if you were here last week.
No, I wasn't.
But I definitely have some issues on, on some of the things that, and I'm not against Pango.
No.
But there's some issues that have to be addressed.
Those are the issues I'm referring to.
I just don't see the urgency that's being pursued on this right now. But I'll address that later.
Well, I hope everybody at home listens to what you say, but I could bet that this, you three, Wexler, McGough, and Gahn will go right along with it because we don't know why, but there's a reason, a hidden agenda. And you say the business administrator maybe recommends it? Bozoni? The same man that recommended, or got the loan from the bank? $2.3 million loan when he worked at Landmark Bank? And now the city's in a lawsuit with him? When the city council wasn't even aware of it, it was illegal. City council didn't even come in front of council and they got the $2.3 million loan from Landmark. Well, he didn't last there too long, but you're taking this guy's recommendations? Give me a break. And then you have this financial consultant that I mentioned many weeks ago, but it went right one ear in and out the other. So when we come here, Mr. McGough, you don't even pay attention to what people say. You sit up there and you write. You know? You should pay attention to what people are saying.
I am.
And I shouldn't even say that because you don't care what we're saying because you never, ever, you're supposed to be representing the people. You're representing the mayor, yourself, and your other councilmen, other than Jack. I mean, I don't know who you're taking care of, but you know damn well it's somebody, somebody important that you think is important. Now, that deal with that financial consultant that got the contract of 2018 without a cap, that was definitely illegal because there's no money in the budget for it. Article 613 of the city code states that the money must be in the budget right now. Mr. Wexler, you're the finance chair and you sat there, you knew it was illegal and if you didn't, you should have.
It's not illegal.
Perme?
It's not illegal.
Oh, yes, it is illegal. Did you read the article 613?
I know it passed here. It's not illegal.
It is illegal.
Thank you.
Mr. Menore, are you saying it's not illegal? Mr. Menore?
Excuse me?
May I ask him a question?
You may ask him.
Okay. And don't you think he should answer the people or no? Perme? Okay. I just want that on the record because I really believe it is illegal.
Thank you, Ms. Frannis.
And other things I think that you do illegally because you know we can't take it to court. So you just keep doing what you're doing and you don't care about the people or what they say. Your joke.
Thank you. Doug Miller?
Good evening, Council. Doug Miller, Scranton. Few issues I have to take issue with here tonight. Going back to some of the business from last week. You know, first on 7B, you know, obviously sitting back and taking a look at this, I do have to agree with, you know, Mr. Loscom that, you know, I don't see the need to have such a sense of urgency on this one. There are many questions to still be addressed. I think, yet again, this is another situation where we're just voting blindly on a piece of legislation without having the proper documentation, correspondence needed. You know, when we have sitting councilmen that still have questions that have yet to be answered, I think that's a troubling thing when, you know, his colleagues want to go ahead and just ram this legislation as, you know, previous councils have had a history of doing, without having knowledge and later on down the road, it ends up causing a nightmare. And, you know, speaking of nightmares, that's what leads me to here, be here tonight. You know, I took real serious issue with the statements made by Mr. Gahan last week and him criticizing the way Mr. Loscom voted on the parking authority default. And I just felt compelled that I needed to revisit this issue because those of us that were around that, at that time, know full well that situation and the events that took place and what led to the parking authority going into default. So for those of us that were around back then, as I was and a lot of other people seated here, we were actually, you know, at these meetings. There were a lot of, there was a lot of, as we know, mismanagement that took place throughout city government. And, you know, when we talk about the default of the parking authority causing all of the city's financial problems and, and, you know, causing a fear in the banking community, I just think that that statement in itself is totally ludicrous. I think that anybody that maybe took the chance to pay an ounce of attention would know that the problems in this city have been caused due to fiscal mismanagement by the previous administration, a decade's worth of mismanagement. If we take a trip back to 2010, we remember that the incoming council majority cut taxes by roughly 11%. The council at that time, led by Mrs. Evans and Mr. Loscom was seated here, our finance chair, Mr. Joyce and Mr. Rogan and McGough were here. And if you can recall, council cut the taxes by roughly 11% with the understanding that the city had the ability to do so, that a steady revenue stream was coming in according to previous budgets. And that enabled the council at that time to go ahead and cut taxes. The weeks following that, the council, with the assistance from their council solicitor, attorney Boyd Hughes, realized that those budgets that they were basing their decisions off of were in fact inaccurate, make believe. And so if we can recall, that tax increase basically, you know, was, was taken back in the following, the next year's budget due to that. And so when you, when you look at that situation in itself, I think that consignifies to us that that was what really caused the brunt of the city's financial problems. It was the mismanagement of the previous administration that budgets that were voted on by previous rubber stamp councils weren't in fact real. And these were budgets that always had Pell's blessing. And then we sit here today and we wonder why we're in the situation we're in. And when it comes to the default of the parking authority, if we can recall, that parking authority was ran recklessly. Getting any correspondence from Mr. Scopoletti or any of his minions down there was impossible. As a matter of fact, if we can all recall, those of us that were actually here and paid attention, we can recall one-page budgets coming from the parking authority that didn't explain anything. They weren't even budgets. They were Mickey Mouse budgets, budgets that a senior class officer would put together. Didn't explain anything. There was no transparency whatsoever. All they would do was just squander money. Money was spent. There was no oversight. Council was left in the dark. The administration did not cooperate with the council at the time. So, you know, people like Mr. Loscom and his colleagues at the time, you know, basically had the wool pulled over their eye, so to speak. They had no idea what was going on. And the only way that that council at the time was going to be able to get full control and have a firm understanding and idea of what was going on was to take the checkbook away. And that's exactly what they did. Mr. Loscom, Mrs. Evans, Mr. Joyce, and Mr. Rogan did just that. They took that checkbook away. They stopped the bleeding. They prevented the parking authority from driving the city deeper and deeper and deeper and dead. And I have to ask people like Mr. Gahan tonight, who want to talk about, quote, "on the record." This is the record. This is factual, this is the factual record. This is actually what transpired. And I would just have to ask you and anybody else that opposed us at the time, just think where this city would be today had this, had the previous council not done what it did. It would be, it'd still to this day be mismanaged, Mr. Scopoletti and all this peons he had. Okay, millions and millions of dollars would have been, would continue to be squandered. There'd be no control over what's going on. And now with the receiver in place, thanks to Mr. Loscom and his colleagues, we now have control. The checkbook's been taken away. And whether you want to agree with that or not, you know, is totally up to you, but that's the real truth. That's what took place. We could have let ahead and let them continue going down the path they were going, but just think where we were. That had nothing to do with frightening the banking community. The banking community's frightened because the city has a, a history of squandering tax dollars. And that's where we truly are.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
And I look forward to listening to Mr. Loscom's presentation later on and that we could get answers because Mr. Loscom, I, you know, I see you're in a position here where you're sort of acting like
Mr. Miller.
The lone person here. And, you know, I really look forward to hearing what you say and I hope your questions get answered because they deserve to get answered. And you shouldn't have the door slammed in your face because your colleagues want to be political and want to continue to play games. And that's the problem we have. So I look forward to hearing your comments, Mr. Loscom.
Thank you. Mr. Dodson?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dodson, resident, taxes paid. Appreciate if anyone with some extra cash laying around would do the same. On the parking tax, I would strongly recommend no exemptions. Even if you have to go to court, too bad. They're making a profit on it and that, it costs the people that park there money. A lot of things have been said and they do pertain the city of Scranton. Act 47, they're talking about an EMT tax. Well, I'd like to point out that $156 is 1% of 15 grand a year or minimum wage. It's about .5% of 50 grand, maybe .47. That's 47 hundredths of a percent. And if you make 90 grand, it's .168 thousandths of a percent. It's 168 thousandths of a percent. So now, do I agree with the commuter tax? I don't think so because you're kind of holding, taking people hostage and that happen to have jobs in Scranton. Now, what's the answer? The state. I want to see people gathered together with the municipal authorities, associations listed in the Sunday Times and sue, in federal court, sue the state of Pennsylvania that their requirement that we support all these nonprofits is unconstitutional and we need that money replaced. I can't keep paying everybody else's taxes. Like I said last week, unconstructable lot. I can't use it for anything but a grass or to park my doggy on and it's $551 if I pay exactly on time. It's crazy. It's totally, my wife is already to a point where she says, "Let it go back. You didn't get anything for 40 years. On it from 1962, let it go." You know? So she's the boss. We know who the boss is in our house, damn it. But Act 76, that's another solution that's been pushed. And now Pennsylvania income tax for the average person will go up to 4.5%. None of which is tax deductible unless you top $12,200 a year in expenses. So, you know, the guy at the top gets to charge that all and the guy at the bottom, too bad. Too bad. And it will increase the 7% sales tax we had at the taxpayers' conference on it. And they couldn't answer whether a can of Campbell's soup would cost 7% more. So it's something to think about. When they can't answer it, I think not. I think I'll pass on that idea. And the Sunday Times, I have to compliment them on finally, this is the first time in 10 years or 12 years that I've been receiving the Scranton Times, that they have admitted that we are 33% tax exempt in this city. So you guys have your jobs picked out for you, you know? And it's, I also want to point out on the EMT tax, it should be a monthly-only tax. It should be by the month if it's deducted because if they deduct it in March and I get laid off on April 15th, money's gone. And, you know, I worked a third of the year in Scranton and I have to go find a job elsewhere. Maybe I'll find another job in Scranton, maybe not. So that should actually be deducted on a monthly basis and not as a lump sum. On the park authority, the only thing I had to say about it was the park authority looked like the Keefe Opera Commission. To refresh everybody's memory out there in TV land, it looked like the mobsters when they're hauled into Congress. Don't answer this, don't answer that. But there is, I'd like to point out, in the library, there probably is a copy of that CD. So if you're interested, try and watch it, acquire it and watch it. Thank you and have a good night. And I'll be back, hopefully. And don't forget, trade packs are, once again, we have enough joblessness in this town. It's 9%. So national issues are local issues. Like the man said, all politics is local. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Ronnie Elman, in case you forgot.
Welcome back.
You know, thousands, maybe tens of thousands of people have asked me why I quit coming down. Why are you smiling at that?
I said, "Welcome back."
You don't believe me.
No, I believe you.
My two sons asked me.
I see you out and about. They're all over you.
I quit coming because I just feel like coming down here to me is like beating your head on a stone wall. Nobody listens. Nothing is being accomplished. I'm no master of orientation, but I think some of these people that come and speak before you are, they, they, they have all kinds of intelligence suggestions for the city and nobody acknowledges this. It's, it's just a sad thing to me, so I just, I decided, people have had enough of me complaining about the universities and all, so I quit coming. But allow me to make this unmistakably clear. I support you people and I support this, the city, but it's just, it's not going nowhere. You know, it's not, it's not becoming a Hazelton. We are a Hazelton. The neighborhoods are in decline. It's, the foreclosures are like 60% up, you know? Nobody addresses all these things. When, people aren't interested in sacrificing now for somebody 10 or 20 years down the road. There's, it's just, you people just don't talk to people like I do when I go to the grocery store and all, it's, or at the club when I eat lunch. You know, then I'm reading the paper, this ridiculous remark that the country's on and Everybody knows that. Then, last week, the paper said, "We shouldn't be taxing non-residents, but it's okay for them to use our streets and schools and hospitals and parks and insurance, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't tax them for nothing." That's, that's the general feeling, you know? The universities don't think they should be taxed and all these phonies, you've got dozens of nothing plain phony businesses hiding behind the Pure Charity Act and they're getting away with murder. But I didn't
But I didn't come to assess Mr. Cross and Mr. Armoso. I would like to say, last week, we lost a piece of property that was over $1,200,000 to the university, so it'd be off the tax rolls. The people that, that had it, they could take it off their income tax for years to come. The university can rent it out or do what they want with it. How are we going to make up that one piece of property? You know, you're talking about another 57% tax increase? The people can't stand it no more. You know, it's, I know that, it's, I don't know what you can do. But like I said, I came to implore you people to do something about the speeding cars on North Main Avenue. It's like a racetrack from, from about Market Street to Shifts. I see cars day and night go by my house, 60, 70, 80 miles an hour, just one after another. It's all day and all night. And it's not the police fault. When a police car comes by, I see a lot of police cars, you know? Everybody slows down. You need some unmarked cars to start giving some huge tickets. And to make matters worse, there's no curbs, so everybody parks at the sidewalk. You have to walk in the street. I watch children in the morning when I walk Sluggel, little kids and their mamas up there in the street because of illegally parked cars. It's, it's a dangerous situation. And now that school's out, a bunch of cold-stone jerks have given children two- and four-wheelers that are all over North Main Avenue. I seen a little girl, I know she's not four years old, in a little tiny quad, it looks like a little toy, going down North Main Avenue a couple Saturdays ago. Now that the kid's been skateboarding by my house on the white line as some kind of new fad. You know, it's just a better time to somebody gets injured bad or worse, and they'll be putting up the little crosses and the teddy bears and all. It's sad. It's coming. It's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
I saw the paper where Dixon City, no, it was Dunmore got a, a new machine for their traffic, and the paper said that we had one. I wish you'd bring it to North Main Avenue and start using it. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Thank you.
If anybody, if you people didn't go to that car show, and I have nothing to do with the club Father's Day, you missed a wonderful affair. There must have been $10 million worth of cars there. Scranton ought to be proud to have them come to NAOC once a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Schumacher.
Good evening, Council. Marie Schumacher.
Good evening.
First, the agenda items will, I believe that a complete comparison of all fees between Pango and the person who made the, or the company that made the, the presentation at caucus last week should be available before this item is voted on. It's only fair to the customers, as it seems that the, that if this were to go through, that it's the customers who would be paying a whole lot of money and more than the other one. And I think you owe it to the, the customers of the city to do that. So I do hope that 7B will be tabled tonight, and I hope that the comparison will be available very shortly, maybe next Wednesday night. And on 6A, this, the amending section three, if I'm reading this correctly, does it state that if somebody has five parking, parking spaces, they're going to have to pay $50, and somebody who has 125 is going to pay $50? Okay, you can answer during motions, but that's the way it appears to me. And the educational parking, I am, I don't think that's right. If they're, if they're charging their students to pay, to park, that is not educational. That is a parking lot, any way you cut it. And on C, 5C, could you tell me during motion, someone, what the nature of the, what the nature of the improvements are at Fellow's Park? Because I, I mean, I can't, I can't imagine what. It was a playground before, and then it was dangerous, and I know, I took the little guy over there, and we left, and now it's something else. And so I'm interested in what else could be done, and I would like to know that. And now, I guess, Mr. Gahn, you're filling in for Mr. Rogan tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, it's been several months over a year since we had a report on the OECD loans, and I would like to get them updated. Last year, on the 28th of February, Mr. Rogan reported that he had the loan portfolio for those who had been, that were still open, but they were paid up to date. But then it also said they may be delinquent, or they may be ahead, but they're not in litigation. There were 31, 31 loans. The following week, he reported on the loans that were in litigation. There were 17 of them for a total of $1.7 million. And so I would ask Mr. Rogan to report back on following things. First of all, are those loans that were current in March of 2013 still current, and/or have they had any terms and conditions changed? I know Alexander's, for instance, their interest rate was reduced to a half a percent, and that was supposed to be changed at, as of the end of this month, and I don't, haven't seen anything come before, Council. So I would also like to know the status of the Alexander interest renegotiation. And then of those that were in litigation, I would like to know of those, what did I say, 14, 14 loans, whether they have completed the process and if they're closed, and the, I'd like to know what the outcome is. Are they, did we gain any money back, or did we lose, have to write off $1.7 million? So if you would pass that on to Mr. Rogan.
This is, Ms. Schumacher.
Yeah.
Would you please put those in writing?
I will put that in writing. And speaking of that, there are several outstanding from several weeks ago. I've heard from Mr. Gahn, but some of the other people?
I still have one, I have one outstanding on landfill.
And when do we expect to hear on that one?
I'm, I'm working on it. This week, we were working on the Pango.
Okay. Okay. Just one more that's time, that's time-critical. The rest I'll bring back next week. I would like to know, or remind people out there that have a concern with the cell phone towers, that the clock is running, that 30-day clock that the Scranton Times reported that was in a, in a legal notice, comments to the FCC. It's not an easy process, but if you care, the clock is running, and I wish you luck in, in doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Anyone else who wishes to address Council?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Lee Morgan. I figured I'd say that since you asked me once before. The first thing I have here is, I'd like to inform the residents of the city, and for people who live outside the city, that there's a spaghetti dinner at Villa Marie's this Sunday from 12 to 6 to support kids swim free, and I hope people would attend. The other thing I have here, there's some kind of discussion took, that was taking place when I was sitting here about legality of a vote, and Mr. Menora said that it was legal. And I do respect you, Mr. Menora, but only a judge determines what's legal, and unless the residents of this city go to court and object to anything the city government does, it's all legal. And, you know, Mr. Gahn, you know, I hope you'd question a lot more things about what's taken place in this city over a very, very long period of time, because I really believe there needs to be a very wide investigation into where all the city's tax revenue was gone for, let's say, 40 years, and where all the federal funds and all the spending has gone to. Because, in my opinion, you know, like, reading the paper today, I saw how they're going to try to allegedly sue the PEL over the pension. Well, I don't know what kind of immunity the PEL has, but the residents of this city paid taxes so that those pensions could be funded, and they weren't. Now, in my opinion, for the city employees to really blame the city for what's taking place, they supported these candidates who ran for office and didn't fund their pensions. And for all the wild, for lack of a better term, pipe dreams that city government and city councils have had over decades, they've led us to where we are now. I mean, you know, let's not forget that at one time, there's a city called Detroit that's just, they're going to turn that back into farmland. A third of that city allegedly is going to be turned back into farmland. Packard was there once. That's the city that helped this country win World War II. That's what made it possible for us to beat the Japanese and the Germans and supply everybody, because Henry Ford taught us how to manufacture there on an assembly line. The Germans were piece-meddling things together. Their, their, their production levels were nowhere near ours. It gave us the ability for land lease and all the other things that were done during that war. And when you take a look at that city and where it is, maybe the Scrantonians here will get a good picture of what's coming for Scranton, because it won't be on that scale. But you can see that city of Scranton's population has declined by 50%. And I know a lot of truck drivers, because evidently I am one. They don't come here in the city and do any large amount of pickups anymore. This city is just so completely downtrodden, it's unbelievable. We have children and people in this city paying to swim in a pool that their tax paid, their tax dollars built. Just makes no sense. We have an inability to use the Home Rule Charter, it was designed, as it was designed, to issue subpoenas and do investigations. And then we wonder where we are and how we got there. Look at this Council and this mayor, if they're going to come up with a plan, they have to pick up the documents of our government and use them. And if they're not willing to do that, then the sheep who live in this city, okay, because sheep don't revolt. They just keep coming and coming and coming, keep getting sheared and sheared, okay? And it gets to the point where they have no money to go out and buy a hamburger for themselves, because the government just took it in taxes. And we've got all these new schemes about how we're not going to commuter tax people, because to be quite obvious, I don't think a court would agree, agree to it. So what we're going to do is, we're going to do an end-around and, and just come up with a new way to raise taxes, so it won't be challenged in the courts. And the legislature, they don't want this pension, because they can't fund their own. I mean, the reality is that America is very broken politically. Two organizations are responsible for that, the Democratic Party and the Republican Party. The bulk of voters are independent, independent voters now, but they're locked out of the primaries in places where they can make real changes and just recast this country. It's time to throw the Democrats and Republicans out of office. They hadn't led us anywhere good. Where do you know of a country where you export all your jobs? If you read the history of America, John Deere created steel in this country because we weren't allowed to by the British Crown to make steel here. We were only supposed to import the things they wanted us to have. We need to know the history of our own country. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address Council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Wexler.
Thank you, Mr. Madoff. First thing I'd like to mention is congratulate the Scranton Fire Department on an outstanding save the other night in North Scranton. Although two homes were damaged, the rest of the neighborhood was protected, and there was no loss of life there, which is a great job. Second thing I'd like to mention is that, after we mentioned it last week at the meeting, the water has been repaired at Connors Park, which will allow the summer program for the children to proceed with the use of water at that. And I'll have some other things to say during legislation. Thank you.
Mr. Lascom.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things, a couple of item, agenda items that were mentioned this evening. Let's see, I'll start with 5C on the, the improvements for Fellow's Park. That was mentioned by one of our speakers. And just looking in the backup, it's for introduction tonight, I will introduce it. And in the backup, it says, "Work to include purchase and installation of recreational equipment, safety surfacing, and enabling further American with disability accessibility following all safety guidelines on South Main Avenue in Scranton's west side." That's all I have at this point, but I will try and get some more information on that. The other item was 6A, and last week I said I would try to get together with a solicitor to ask some questions on this. Unfortunately, this past week, I've had some personal situations that didn't allow me to do so. But I do have issue with the exemption of educational parking. Again, they're charging their students and faculty to park in these places, no different than, than another parking business. So, in light, I believe there is a lawsuit pending, but I, I don't think that should change the legislation at this time. I think that would only feed into the lawsuit, personally. I'm not a lawyer. But I don't agree with Section 1, and I, I do have questions about the, the fee change for $50 from a dollar per space, too. Will that hurt the small park or, or whatever? So at this point, I will be voting no on that, because, you know, I just disagree with some of those issues. And next, I would like to apologize for last week. And the reason I'm apologizing is that I do get too passionate on some issues. I take a lot of issues to heart, because I feel I'm representing the majority of the taxpayers out there. And sometimes, if I feel they're getting a raw deal, I will say it. I may be wrong. I'm, you know, I'm not always right. The thing is, at the end of the day, and again, we don't agree a lot of ti, I don't agree with speakers a lot of times, but at the end of the day, we do have to come together and work for the greater good. There's going to be issues we agree on, issues we don't agree on. But on this, the issue that I brought up last week, with the parking contract, I still, I still have a lot of questions concerning that. And my fellow councilman, who was unable to be here this evening, agreed with me to table this motion. Unfortunately, he's not here this evening, but he did speak to me by phone and said if he was here, he would vote to table, because he still has, has several questions on it. And, you know, I, I think, there's some serious issues. We, if we're pursuing something this simple, and we have some major issues coming ahead of us, I would just hope we look at everything as seriously as this. I did write a letter to my fellow council members. Unfortunately, I didn't get it to them till this morning. Again, you know, if anybody wants to speak to me about my personal week, I would be glad to do that. I'm not going to broadcast it over the air. But I was at a disadvantage this week, and I was able to get this information together this morning. But since we like to put things on the record, I would like to put my letter on the record at this meeting here. And the letter is as follows. Dear City Council Members, I have great respect and admiration for our business administrator, whom I believe is underpaid and overworked for the job he is doing. However, I take issue with his recommendation of Pango Mobile Parking over Mobile Now and the other two vendors who submitted bids and were discounted because of missing affidavits as a paper cell provider by the city of Scranton. By history, Pango has had the distinct advantage because they have been operating in Scranton for a year now. I have to question- I have to question the fact that this company was even provided with a contract last year, given the fact that there was never an RFP request for that type of service at that time. This contract was provided solely and unilaterally by former Mayor Chris Dougherty without any discussion with or knowledge of set agreement with City Council, the legislative body of the city. It was that City Council majority that began the push for accountability and enhancements to our on-street parking program well over four years ago that opened the way for improvements with our parking both financially and technically. With the shakeup of the Scranton Parking Authority, it has finally allowed us an opportunity to become more progressive. The Scranton Parking Authority under the former administration was extremely uncooperative with the City Council's numerous requests for financial information, all the while providing us with sham budgets. The Scranton Parking Authority continued to cost the city and its taxpayers more and more annually as they were allowed to borrow their way into oblivion. The last City Council majority has been used as a scapegoat for the financial institution's reluctance to loan the city money, using the default of the Scranton Parking Authority as the reason. Fact is that the City of Scranton was in a financial quagmire years before the Scranton Parking Authority default. As stated previously, the Scranton Parking Authority was allowed to borrow money from banks well in excess of the garage's worth, and some loans from banks with no guaranteement of payment from the city. By the way, the S P A bond payments have been made on schedule. The previous City Council majority has been responsible for saving taxpayers a significant amount of money by stopping the bleeding at the Scranton Parking Authority and by forcing the past administration to seek bids for on-street parking meter management and upgrades. The past administration was going to provide central parking, a much more lucrative contract, until the last City Council majority stepped in and urged the maj, urged the administration to seek bids for the on-street meter management, thereby guaranteeing a more taxpayer favorable contract which was awarded to Republic Parking, who have been doing a commendable job to date. So with all this that has been going on, it is much to my chagrin that the current Business Administrator under a new mayor has made a recommendation to keep Pango as a pay-by-sale provider when there are still questions as how, as to how they're originally contracted by the city. I have some comments and questions for my colleagues on City Council to ponder before making a final decision on the pay-by-sale agreement. Number one, under the original agreement with Pango and the City of Scranton, Pango is charging twelve percent of collected parking receipts. Why, after forcing an RFP, are they willing to reduce their fee to five percent? Has a city not requested an, had the city not requested an RFP, the Pango contract would renew for another, another two years at nine percent? Number two, Exhibit A, page seven of the Pango Agreement states, fees for the text reminder system are a dollar, reminder service are a dollar ninety-nine as of the effective date, but are subject to change during the term. Text reminders are automatically charged to each active customer's account on a monthly basis. Number three, there's a nine cents fee charged to the city for every check that a parking enforcement officer performs on a vehicle to see if it is valid or not. Number four, the Pango proposal, page nine of ninety-seven, item four point four states, the vendor may charge customers a convenience fee to recoup sign, decal production and installation. Number five, the Pango proposal provides two options of payments. Option one, a ten percent convenience fee paid by the parker. Option number two, five percent of the parking receipts to be paid by the city. The Business Administrator has elected to go with option two. Mobile Now does not charge for the text reminder service, it is free to users. Mobile Now does not charge for parking enforcement officers' car validation checks, they are free. Mobile Now can alter the thirty cent fee in any way instead of fifteen cents per parker and fifteen per city. One example can be twenty cents per parker and ten percent city. That can be altered. Mobile Now's proposal has no hidden fees. I have attached a three-page statement from Noble, from Mobile Now explaining such. As we heard at last week's caucus from representatives from Mobile Now, they would also offer the same terms as Pango on a cost-sharing plan with the city to upgrade the enforcement devices. And looking over the Pango proposal, I'm left with a few more questions that should be answered prior to any vote on this contract. Under the RFP requirements, the vendors' pay-by-sale services shall be PCI DSS certified. Proposals shall, submit a PCI DSS and PCI dash PA DSS Level One compliant certificate with their proposals. These are certifications that their security with their online credit and stuff like that is, is up to date. Pango did provide an attestation document, but no certificates with their proposal. Furthermore, they don't seem to be PCI DSS certified at all in the U.S. At least, the official Visa database of U.S. certified companies does not list them. The authority would, this is another recommendation or requirement, the authority would prefer that vendors provide us with an attestation by an objective third party stating that the application has been tested for common security vulnerabilities. Pango provided an attestation dated October sixth, two thousand thirteen. Typically, such attestations are valid for three months at a time. Thus, it appears that Pango has presented a document that is no longer valid. In their list of clients, more particularly international clients, Pango references Cologne, Germany on page seventy-seven of ninety-seven of their proposal. I happen to have some friends in Germany. However, it appears that research on Cologne shows that Pango operations in this city were closed down around March thirty-first of two thousand fourteen. This may raise questions about a possible misrepresentation in their proposal. In closing, I cannot understand the urgency to vote on this contract until these issues have been resolved. Pango has agreed to continue their service to the city until a contract has been approved. After all, it is a further benefit to Pango as their fees will be, continue to be paid at nine percent and not the reduced fee of five percent. So I respectfully request that this legislation be tabled until these issues are resolved. Jack Lascom, Scranton City Council. And I've attached a three-page list of items from Mobile Now, and they're available for anyone who's, who's interested. Basically, some of the same information that I explained here. Again, I want what's right for everyone here. I have no qualms about Pango, I'm, I'm not that technically savvy, I just wanna see that everyone's getting a fair deal, the city and those who are using the program. And, and some of these were brought up by complaints that I have copies of that were brought up for different issues. One was a security issue, that's how I ended up looking into that, and the other was a problem with, earlier, it was, it was in the newspaper about some issues with, with the Pango thing. But personally, and, and I'm not an expert, but I think some of these issues here do deserve further investigation to the benefit of everyone here. And I do not, as I repeat, see the urgency not to table this until these issues are resolved. Again, the winner in this here, if we delay it, is Pango, because they're being paid more now than if they were awarded the contract today. So beyond any realm, I cannot understand why it would not be tabled, because there is no urgency at this point. And respectfully, at this, at this time, as I said, Mr. Rogan would have seconded my vote, I am requesting that we table this issue until these answers are provided.
Is that a motion?
I'm seeking, yes, I'm asking for a motion to table.
Is there a second to the motion? There is no second.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Gahan?
Okay, thank you. Just a few issues with what Mr. Lascom said. He's asking, what, what is the urgency? There is no urgency. We have known about this since May thirtieth. We all received in an email the recommendation from our Business Administrator, Dave Bolzoni, May thirtieth. That's almost four weeks that Mr. Lascom has had to ask any questions, anything. He, he sent us a letter, we got it today, this morning, with all of these questions that he wants us to ponder. If, I mean, Mr. Lascom, did you, did you speak to Mr. Bolzoni, did you ask him these questions?
As I respectfully said, I'm not going to broadcast on television what my personal situation has been the past week, but I do work twelve-hour shifts, seven straight, I did have personal issues with a family member that was ill this week. I don't have, this is not a full-time position for me, unfortunately, we do it full-time, but I asked the questions. When I got this proposal, it takes some research that I did on my own to get to this point and get to these questions. That's still besides the point, whether, whether I had four weeks or not. We have ten more weeks to pass this legislation, or twenty weeks.
All I'm, listen, all I'm saying is, everybody up here works, everyone has personal lives, that's, it's not our, that's not our problem. You have four weeks to do your homework on things. You didn't, you didn't, well, let me finish, because he's making it seem like, you know, something underhand is going on here, like, as he said last week. He had time to do his homework, he didn't do his homework, that's the bottom line. He didn't ask-
Now, you're making accusations, but please.
Well, all I'm saying is, he had the chance to ask Mr. Bolzoni, he had four weeks, we found this out on May thirtieth, and he didn't ask him. So, that's all I have on that. Mrs. Schumacher had asked for an update on the Harrison Avenue Bridge project. Council had reached out to Mr. Poshus, who responded that he believed the Bunker Hill Bridge was owned by Lackawanna County, and that the let date, the awarding of the contract had been moved to September eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, due to delays in getting utility clearances and PUC clearance. Two weeks ago, a gentleman contacted me regarding a streetlight that was out in front of his house. Council had contacted D P W and Joyce Electrical, fixed the gentleman's problem, they were a little backed up, so they should be getting out to everyone. The street sweeper is scheduled to be in South Scranton from June thirtieth to July third, Cherry Street to Breck Street, including all avenues and streets. And just a reminder that the street sweeping schedule is on the city's website at www.scrantonpa.gov under the D P W link. An update on the permit parking legislation for Prescott Avenue, I believe that that legislation should be on the agenda by next week, and then we will table it to allow for a public hearing on the matter. My thoughts and prayers go out to the families affected by the fire in North Scranton this week. And finally, I will reserve the rest of my comments for Agenda Item five C. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. Couple of items. First of all, the, someone talked about the Composite Pension Board and the minutes from it. As President of Council, I am a member of the Composite Pension Board. I generally do not attend those meetings, I have one or two. The city clerk, by proxy, attends those meetings. But the, the minutes of the meetings are made available to, to all of the council members, as a matter of fact. And generally, if there is any question that takes place during those meetings, the city clerk will address it to me, and it can be resolved in that way. But hopefully, the, the minutes of, of that meeting will be provided, and whatever questions there may be can be answered. As far as the, the legislation tonight on the mobile parking, by contract, had nothing been done, the contract with Pango would have extended for another two years, the current contract. It was deemed, early in the, this administration, in, there were a number of meetings held with various parking entities, and the issue of mobile parking and the fact that the Pango contract was expiring came up. It was through the Business Administrator and the administration felt that the best way to legitimize the process, rather than just extending the Pango contract, and counsel would have, would have had no say in the matter, it was put out, or RFPs were issued, and all providers were allowed the opportunity to submit proposals. Proposals were received, it was the recommendation, after all of the proposals were received, Pango, Mobile Now being the, the final two, it was determined by the Business Administrator and others that the best proposal for the city would be from Pango, that they were the most responsible bidder. The recommendation had nothing to do with prior history of parking in the City of Scranton. This was a new administration and a new council. What happened in the past had no significance to this proposal or this recommendation. And the recommendation was based solely on the proposals that were made. It was deemed the Pango was the most responsible, legislation was prepared and given to council. And yes, all of council had an opportunity to review the proposals, they were available, all of council had the opportunity to ask questions of anyone on this legislation. And there is no urgency, it is simply the matter of doing business. It was given to us, it was voted upon last week in first reading, now comes up for a second reading. If people are unsatisfied with the recommendation, they have the opportunity to vote no. That is how the process works. And therefore, and that was my reason for not tabling it, our, our job is to vote yes or no on these, on the legislation. And therefore, it stay, it will stay on the agenda, and we will vote on it later this evening. Just a couple of other responses. As far as the, brought up about the history of the Parking Authority and all, just for the record, the debt service to the Parking Authority, following the default vote, the vote on the default, we are now paying eight, approximately eight hundred thousand dollars more per year on debt service than we were prior. Also, so it, it has not necessarily, that has not necessarily saved us any money. And that's all, and that's all I have, thank you. Yes.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Just, just to go back, you said the past history-
It has nothing to do with this. The only reason I bring up the past history is because that was in the recommendation from Mr. Bolzoni. He mentioned the history of, of Pango being here as a favorable issue. And I don't think we're here to just blindly accept everybody's recommendation without researching it or reviewing it, or, you know, I mean, or we would be going back to being called rubber stampers. I think we all have a duty to, to research these issues, get the questions answered, and, you know, if this was a, a matter of yes, no, that's one thing. But there are some serious issues here, issues specifically on the security of the people who park here, not alone the financial issues, but the seri, the serious issue of credit card access. And that's why I so adamantly want these issues- And that's why I so adamantly want these issues resolved. But apparently, I'm the only one, other than, unfortunately, yes, we have our vote, yes, no, yes, no. Mr. Rogan is not here this evening to cast his vote, but I apologize, but that's the way I feel.
And the assumption that you make that no one else asks questions is not valid. All of us did our research, asked questions, and came to a conclusion on this. Whether it was a yes or a no conclusion will remain to be seen.
So I may ask, you're not, the rest of this panel is not concerned about the security issues that have been presented here this evening?
But why are you presenting them to us and not the business administrator? You've had since May 30th. That's what, that's what we're trying to tell you. And you say we accept, we're accepting-
Because we're voting on it, not the business administrator. We're voting on-
But you've had questions-
You already got his, you already have his recommendation. It's you I have to sell, not the business administrator.
Yeah, but you have your personal questions that you failed to ask. You got us a letter this morning. I told you there was a reason for that. I apologize.
All right. The question is, the question was, that, yes, I will answer for myself. That I am satisfied that Pango was the most responsible bidder, and I am prepared to vote. And I feel that the questions that I had were adequately answered.
That wasn't the question I asked, though. The question I asked was, are you concerned about the security issue that was presented here?
I don't, I don't believe that there is one.
I don't believe there's a Santa Claus either.
Excuse me. That's insulting.
I apologize. I do take that-
You asked me a question. I gave you a responsible answer.
And again, folks, you know-
Because I disagree.
We agree and disagree, but we do work together. In the long run, we have to do what's for the better issue. I may not be victorious on this, and that's why I'm here. That's why we have this vote. Not to say I'm happy, because I think it does impact a lot of people, but I do apologize, Mr. McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. Please.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into lease agreements with West Scranton Little League for various Little League, T-Ball, Farm League, Teenage League, Missy League, Baseball and Softball for use of city-owned property in connection with approved Little League, T-Ball, Farm League, Teenage League, Missy League, Baseball and Softball activities for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2017.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Sobald?
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the county of Lackawanna for Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program Grant for the Improvement Project at Fellows Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials to accept the grant. If successful, to execute a grant agreement and accept and disburse the grant funds for the city of Scranton Improvement Project at Fellows Park.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
Sobald?
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm always in favor of improving our parks, and I think recreation is very important in the city of Scranton. However, this project to put a playground in Fellows Park doesn't make much sense to me. The city put CDBG funds into Fellows Park in the fall of 2011, and the project was completed in May of 2012. They took the playground equipment out of Fellows Park because it had a 20-year history of being a magnet for illegal activity, such as drugs, among other things. The project in 2011 addressed the immediate need for a safe, accessible play area with safety surfacing, an area for parking with ADA accessibility, drainage correction, security lighting, and site amenities such as benches and trash receptacles. The pavilion was also painted and repaired. This grant that the city will be receiving from Lackawanna County in the amount of $10,000 is for work that includes the purchase and installation of recreational equipment. It doesn't specify exactly what that will be. Also, safety surfacing and enabling further ADA accessibility. The grant application doesn't specify exactly how they will enable further ADA accessibility. Again, I'm not sure why we're putting money into a park that was just renovated and putting playground equipment back in when it was an issue in the past that neighbors complained about. The other factor that plays in here is that the proposed playground is prohibited based on Fellows Park historical designation, and another reason that the playground equipment was removed in 2011. The site has state and federal significance based on the role of Mr. Fellows during the American Revolution. He transported government papers that are now known to be the Constitution of the United States. Since Joseph Fellow Jr. is still buried underneath the monument, it is considered a historic cemetery. Karen Foster, president of the Westside Hyde Park Neighborhood Group, spoke with Mary Ann Moran Savakinas, director of the Lackawanna Historical Society, who confirmed the historic cemetery designation and provided links to the information. She also provided a copy of Eileen Freeman's book that chronicles the history of the Fellows Park property. Thomas Murray's West Scranton High School 10th grade class researched the history of the Fellows family and submitted an application to the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for a historical marker to be put at Fellows Park. The site was approved and received a mini-grant in 2006, 2007, from the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for a purchase and installation of the Fellows Park Pennsylvania Historical Marker. In closing, given these historical facts that I have pointed out relating to Fellows Park, I would urge the mayor to reconsider the nature of this proposed project. I will be voting yes to introduce this resolution, and this past week, I sent my questions and concerns to the administration for their review. Thank you.
Just on the question?
Yes.
See, we do agree. I have to agree with Mr. Gahn on this, and I know he's familiar with it because he was with OECD when they did the last project, and that was just pretty recently, a few years ago. That's why I had, I do have some questions on it myself, and I appreciate the research you did as far as the historical aspect and stuff like that, but, but it does, you know, parks are good, and money and grants are good, when we need them, where we need them. But to just throw random money around just to do it, I would hope that's not what we're looking at doing here. Perhaps that $10,000 could be used in some other area of the city to a much greater benefit. But I do agree with Mr. Gahn's comments. I will be voting to introduce it, but I'll be waiting to hear some answers. Thank you.
And yes, if the money is being used to somehow make it more accessible for handicapped, and exact, I don't know exactly what that would be, I would be more than in favor of doing that. But there are some questions, obviously, about what it was and what the proposal may be. Are we returning it to a situation that was untenable to begin with? What we need is a more definitive idea of what exactly is going to be done at the park, rather than just a statement of improvements. We really should determine whether, in fact, they will be improvements, or that they would return it to a detrimental situation. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A reading by title, file of the council number 30, 2014, and ordinance amending file of the council number 30, 2012, entitled, and ordinance imposing a tax for general revenue purposes on operators of parking spaces at the rate of 15% upon each parking transaction, and establishing annual license procedures and fees, and promulgating the record-keeping and reporting rules and regulations on parking transactions pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act 53PA CSA 6901 et cec. By amending Section 1 definitions, by adding the exemption of educational parking, amending Section 3, annual license, by changing the annual license at a fee of $1 per space to a flat fee of $50 per year, amending Section 5, return and payments, by changing monthly to quarterly, and in addition to city, add or the city's designee, and amending Section 6 to add a designee to the overall management of the parking tax.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just reiterate my comments I made under motions. I don't agree with these amendments, so I will be voting no.
I don't necessarily disagree with the amendments. I think what we need to do is to define what educational parking means. Does that apply to any parking at an educational institution? Does it, does it, is it defined as only student parking? I think the idea of, just the phrase "educational parking" really doesn't define or explain exactly what is being exempt. And I think that that is something that really, that does need to be answered prior to a final vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it, and so move.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 31, 2014, and ordinance, amending file of the council number 79, 2012, entitled, and ordinance repealing all prior ordinances regarding fines to be imposed for police and fire departments' responses to false alarms in the city, establishing fines to be imposed for the activation of an alarm device which is determined to be a false alarm by the police department or fire department, authorizing the administration and enforcement of said fines, and prescribing penalties for violations of this ordinance. By amending certain sections, eliminating a section, renumbering and adding a new section to provide for a graduated fee structure, and to increase collection and payment of said service charges, and to provide for an appeal process.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6C. What is your pleasure? Or 6B, excuse me. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. I did receive one, one phone call concerning this, and it was a retired fireman who's thankful that the, the fees for home alarms are, is being changed, or being distinguished from, I'll say-
Commercial.
Commercial, yes, that, as he explained, one evening, his alarm system kept triggering, and it had nothing to do with, it was a faulty, there was a fault in the system, and he couldn't get it repaired in time, and he was being subjected to a rather heavy fee because the system went faulty. It was not his fault, but he was thankful that it's being changed, and I think this will be a good, a good remedy for that situation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
6C, reading by title, file of the council number 32, 2014, and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with West Scranton Little League for use of city-owned property for a one-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2015. Per Section 9 of the lease agreement, the Westside Falcons junior football team will enter into a third-party agreement with the West Scranton Little League for use of the Lackawanna Little League field for the months of July through November 2014, as specified in the lease agreement.
As chair for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A. I'm on the wrong one, right? I'm losing track here. I'm sorry. You've heard reading by title of Item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 61, 2014, appointment of Sean McCandrew, 821 North Garfield Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1A504, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Mr. McCandrew will be replacing Colleen Gleason, who resigned June 10, 2014. Mr. McCandrew's term will expire on December 31, 2017.
As chair for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rexler?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 62, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Pango Mobile Parking, also known as Pango USA LLC, to provide metered and un-metered parking paid by cell services for the city of Scranton for the period of four years from June 1, 2014, through May 31, 2018.
As chair for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
Mr. McGough, I have a comment, please. I save my comments because I figure the comment section during our council part might become heated, so I wanted to save my comments to this point. Since last week's meeting, I too had questions when we left the meeting last week, so what I did is I went back and I reviewed the Pango proposal, went through the information that Mobile Now had given us, went back to the BA's recommendation, and I also made some calls to the representative from Pango. And based upon the information that I received from all of that information, and digested it, I feel that Pango does offer the best opportunity for the city.
Thank you. One other comment on, on this, that last week, it was asked why the use of the term "un-metered parking" was included. As I said during a caucus, un-metered provides for the opportunity to create mobile parking zones, areas where you would not need to put meters, where it would be strictly for parking through mobile apps. Now, there is no specific plan at this time to do that, but, excuse me, but the legislation does provide for that opportunity. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rexler?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
No.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
I would like to make a motion and take file of the council number 28, 2014, from the table.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. I will say again that Item 7C, which was previously tabled, is the legislation from OECD that was put on the table for a 30-day comment period as required by HUD. The next piece of legislation also is a related one, and if there is anyone who wish, wishes to speak to either 7C or 7D, may do so now.
Question on the content of the changes that were made. I know, for instance, our forester, Tony Santoli, has been doing an admirable job and putting in many, many hours, and probably saved us from a lot of litigation from felled trees. So I'm concerned about his. I know the previous council cut his budget rather severely this year for the operating budget, and he has money, had money in the OECD budget. And I'm concerned, particularly with the hemlocks up at Naog. I think that those shots have to be given every year, or we could lose the hemlocks. And I wonder if, if that is an item that's been cut.
Offhand, I do not believe that that was included in the, the changes, in the amendments.
You can't say for certain, because, I mean, I really think that would be, that would be very detrimental. I don't know how Tony's going to operate on what he's got- I don't know how Tony's going to operate on what he's got this year.
Okay, I'm wrong. It has here, this is two...
I mean, I apologize. I know there was a public commentary, but I didn't have...
Program year 2012, I'm just...
Yeah.
Program year 2012, forestry tree planting amount taken, $11,121.92.
I think that was all of it. So he's got, and somebody have the budget? What's he got this year in total?
I do not have that available.
I think you'd cut it in half, if I'm not mistaken, from like 20, I don't know, it was 20 down to 10 or 10 to 5, but rather significantly. So I would urge you, if you're going to go ahead and approve this, to at least somebody make contact with this tremendous volunteer of the city and see if you can't find, find some, see what his position is financially. And if he's not going to be able to do some of those important time-sensitive things, such as the treatment of the hemlocks, then maybe you could find some in your contingency funding to transfer and increase his operating money.
I do know that all of the programs that were either eliminated or cut, the, those people or those organizations were contacted by Ms. Abely through OECD, and it was explained, and I'm not going to say that they agreed, but it was, you know, the information was given to them prior to the amendments being made.
Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Schumacher, just, I agree with you on Mr. Santoli. He's a very fine gentleman. I've known him for years. I did have a conversation with him out in this hallway several weeks ago regarding funding and the issues on that, and I do agree, it's very important. I would hope that the administration will find something in one of the accounts, or perhaps the county who's giving, who's giving the grant for Fellows Park can maybe work out a greener grant or something like that for this situation.
Maybe, I mean, that certainly, I would, I would encourage you to pursue that because it's true. A lot of people from Lackawanna County use Naog Park. That's not all Scranton City residents, so it behooves them to maintain its beauty as well.
Exactly. And Mr. Santoli does this all of his own heart, free of charge. He's pretty active, too.
Well, and he's saying, I mean, you really should ask him sometime for the statistics of what he's done, the number of trees that have been cut down and trimmed back, and some of them, I don't know if you ever went on a, one of his excursions where he took you around the city and showed you, and trees that look perfectly healthy, like 60 feet tall, and he would take a, an iron rod and put it right through. It was totally, totally hollow, even though it had leaves and others that have been down and a lot of trees planted. So I think it's an important program for our city. It increases the oxygen in our air and, but the hemlocks especially. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to address 7C or 7D? Thank you.
7C, previously tabled for consideration by the committee on community development for adoption, file of the council number 28, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement numerous accounting adjustments to the city of Scranton IDIS system for community development block grant funds by decreasing funding for various programs to account for deficiencies in the city of Scranton's line of credit with the Department of Housing and Urban Development due to unplanned Section 108 payments by the city of Scranton in the amount of $1,662,043.98.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chair for the committee on community development?
As temporary chairperson for the committee on community development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
I would like to make a motion and take file of the council number 29, 2014, from the table.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so move.
7D, previously tabled for consideration by the committee on community development for adoption, file of the council number 29, 2014, amending file of council number 56 of 2012, titled, "Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2013, by decreasing funding for various programs to account for deficiencies in the city of Scranton's line of credit with the Department of Housing and Urban Development due to unplanned payments in various Section 108 loans guaranteed by the city of Scranton in the amount of $1,662,043.98.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chair for the committee on community development?
As temporary chairperson for the committee on community development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Lascom?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Prior to adjournment, I again would like to remind people that next week's meeting will be on Wednesday evening, not Thursday. And I will, if there's no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.